With me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, in the name of our republic, in justice, for all. Will silence the phone?
Okay, first order of business is the minutes from the regular session of Wednesday, January 27th.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of Wednesday, January 27th, 2016, as printed.
Okay, and Tim, we're going to talk about the Mass Gaming Commission hearing that took place during your report.
Yeah, I'll go on the drive.
Okay. All right, we have a motion.
Second.
Second, Mr. Moriarty, all those in favor? Okay. Tim, do you, do we have any citizens' concerns this evening before us? No? Communications and announcements?
There was, there was one announcement here for the winter walk for the Holbrook Town Forest, Saturday, February 13th, which is this coming Saturday, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM, and it's a walk that's starting at the Carolyn Long entrance, 255 Pine Street.
And then your town minister to report?
Yes, so, good news, we got our state earmark grant signed and received last week, and so a big thank you to Representative Ron Mariano for all his help in, in getting us these additional funds, and it really helps towns like Holbrook to be able to do certain projects that we just can't do within our, within our tax base. So, much appreciated, we'll start doing the work that was specified for this grant, which includes some work over at the library, and, and in town hall interior and exterior. So that's great news. Busy working on the FY17 Board of Selectment budget, so we're getting close, I was meeting with the finance chair earlier tonight, and we'll continue to meet, and the plan is to bring that to the Board of Selectmen for a meeting in March, and bring the department heads, and have, have a, have a, have a meeting, and then potentially have another meeting with the finance committee to go over the budget, and hopefully get it all buttoned down relatively quickly this year. We also, the CDBG application has been fully submitted, they're going to be pushing the button on that tomorrow morning, I got word from the third-party contractor, met with the, the landfill folks, again, Clean Earth, this week, on, yesterday, and they're, they're plugging along, they're, they're starting to have some discussions with DEP as to the best route to go in terms of permitting, so there'll be more to follow on, on that. The 227 Plymouth Street sale is scheduled for the 24th, which, we have that as an agenda item. Our Department of Revenue, DLS Technical Assistance Visit, it should be taking place sometime in March, and I would, that's going to, that's basically DOR coming in to take a look at our practices, make some recommendations for improvements, both in the treasurer's office, and really all of our financial operations, so, looking forward to that getting off the ground. In terms of updates from meetings, the, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, the Gaming Commission, public hearing was held on January 28th, it was mostly Brockton residents, I spoke on behalf of the town, I know the chairman of the finance committee was also there, it was relatively uneventful, I guess, is the way I would describe it, it wasn't a full room, but it wasn't empty, and I would say that sixty, you know, the majority of the folks that spoke, spoke in favor. So, it was interesting, the Gaming Commission, you know, ran the whole meeting and coordinated everything with the schools, so that went well. Been working, I met with the school committee, Budget Subcommittee, a couple of weeks back to discuss their budget, and, and they're continuing to work on that. The Union Street earmark that we've talked about in the past, met with the engineers a couple of weeks ago, and there's, there's work to be done in terms of administrative work, we have to get the project approved by MassDOT as, as a project, and then we have to go to the MPO, which is really the funding arm for these projects, and have them approve the funding, so, the goal is to, and then there's a public hearing on the project, so, all of that, we're trying to line up, we have a meeting with the regional MassDOT here toward the end of, on the 18th, actually, of this month, and that would be myself and our engineers, and, and Director Echord, and then the MPO has two meetings in April, and we will attend both of those and speak on behalf of the project, so, in hopes of having it moved from there. Historical Commission is busy working on the birthday party, Mr. Chairman, you had asked about getting some pictures on the webpage, and, so, Mr. Dean has been working on a slideshow for the birthday party, once he's done with that, after the birthday party, he'll put that, he'll put a link, I don't know if he's going to set up a specific face page for it, or however he's going to do it, but he and Margie have talked, and there'll be a link from our webpage to get to those pictures.
Great.
And yesterday, we met with Joint Water, and that was, really, we're in contract negotiations on that.
Just a question on the, the birthday party, is that a free event, or is that a paid event?
The birth, the birthday party is, is $10 for adults, and students and children free.
Can we make that maybe a suggested donation, so we don't cut off some people? It's a birthday party, I think it's just serving cake and coffee, it would be a free event.
Well, they, they're concerned about covering their costs, they want to make sure that they have enough money to, to buy what they're buying, so, and they were...
Does the town arm have an opportunity to, to put funds toward that?
We'd have to look, I know our, our Memorial Day fund is, is pretty low, I'll, I'll talk to them, I've been kind of letting them run with it, but...
I think that was what the, you know, at least, at least my impression was, we were gonna not, we were gonna forego a dinner and a, and a kind of a formal ceremony in favor of, you know, cake and, and, you know, soft drinks and, and coffee, that would keep the, the costs reasonable, and then therefore we wouldn't have to pass that through to, you know, to any of the citizens who wanted to attend.
I will, I will recommend to the committee that it be a, a suggested donation, how's that?
Just to get more people there, that's all, I just thought would be a free event also.
Yeah, we had talked about that, and they were, they were concerned, I mean, they, you know, at my last, at the last meeting, they basically said, we really, we're gonna, we're gonna charge $10 a person, because we're worried about the costs.
Are they looking, what's, what's the ballpark pricing for the, for the event?
They're thinking about $1,000, $1,200.
Oh, is it?
In that range. And they are soliciting donations and have received some, so.
Okay.
So there's a couple of folks here that I'd like to introduce the board to, Elaine Highland is here, she works for the Mass State Senate, I can't remember what senator you worked for.
No, it's the House.
Oh, I'm sorry, House of Reps, and she's been very instrumental in the Holbrook flag, and, and setting up a, a date for that, Elaine, do you mind just coming up and introducing yourself?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Elaine Highland, I live at 33 Damon Avenue in Holbrook, and like Mr. Gordon had mentioned, we've been going back and forth with trying to get a flag up at the State House, they have a great Hall of Flags, and Holbrook apparently does not have a flag up there, and there was some talk about the possibility there was one a few years ago, brought up to the State House, however, according to the Bureau of State Office Buildings, they do not have one, and there's an empty post where the Holbrook flag would, would be hung. So, that being said, they did reproduce another flag that they do have here, ready to go, and Mr. Gordon and I and Margie, we've been going back and forth trying to secure a date to have a dedication ceremony up at the State House, it would be during the daytime, and we've tentatively, is it?
Yeah.
April 7th, tentatively, at 1:00 PM at the State House, in the Great Hall of Flags, and so now we're gonna, you know, solidify that, get it all, all ready to go and, and confirmed, and it's just a, you know, it could be, you know, 15, 20-minute ceremony, just a little dedication, people can speak, Mr. Gordon could get up, or maybe somebody from the Historical Commission might want to offer a little bit of history about the flag, or, it's, you know, pretty informal, and then I'll get in touch with the Senate, the Senator and the representatives of Holbrook, and see if we can coordinate them to be there as well. So we're trying to put it all together right now, but I think it'll be a wonderful thing to have our town flag at the State House.
That is out.
For, for decades and decades to come, so, I appreciate the time, and thank you very much.
I appreciate your efforts here, Elaine, thank you.
And then, then one final, I think some of you have met Pastor Sean Keener from the Brookfield Bible School, I'm sorry, Bible Church, and he's, he's new to town, he's been trying to, he's been getting involved, I shouldn't say trying to get involved, and he and I, he came in and we met and sat down for a while, and he, he asked if he could come and sort of say hello officially to the Board of Selectmen, so I said absolutely, and I would ask, Pastor, do you want to come up and say hello?
Hello?
Welcome again, how are you?
Great.
Fantastic.
Yeah, we're, we're happy to be here and enjoying learning the environment, and we just moved from Pennsylvania, we have seven in our family, but only five now, because the two oldest are doing their thing, and, yes, I'm the new, new lead pastor at Brookfield Bible, and I just, I just want to impress upon everybody here that we're eager and hungry to be a benefit to the community, no strings attached, of course, you know, we're not looking for anything out of it for ourselves, but we're, we want to match up our gifts and talents and skills to however we can help out best, here in Holbrook especially. So, last week I attended Holbrook Cares for the first time, I saw that as possibly a great avenue where we might be able to be a part of, of doing something good here, but anybody who has any ideas of how we might be able to match up our, our resources to help Holbrook, please let me know, thank you.
I appreciate it, Pastor, thank you, thank you very much, I know that a lot of the clergy in town, you know, know each other on a, on a, on a pretty friendly basis, and historically, that's worked very well, whereas, you know, the different congregations aren't duplicating various, various services, and everyone's working together, and I, and I know that, you know, probably two or three years ago, St. Joseph's was very active with a lot of the other different congregations, regardless of denomination, and some really good things happened from there, and I think we grew as a community, so, if you can insert yourself into those, those groups, I guarantee good things will happen, so.
As a matter of fact, apparently there used to be sort of a ministerium here, I guess, I don't know, a decade ago or something, so, I'm working to, to sort of put that together again, so Father Tom and I have already been developing a relationship, and I've met with almost every pastor in Holbrook, and, you know, the wheels are turning a little slow here, but we're gonna try to start getting, start getting the churches together again to work together for Holbrook, yeah.
Appreciate that.
I've been selling it as the Church of Holbrook, St. Joseph's and Brookville and St. John's and all that stuff.
Excellent, great, well, I appreciate you coming to us and, and saying hello, and I know we've met, so it's, it's great to see your smiling face again, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, yes.
I just want to say that the Brookfield Baptist Church, or the Brookfield Bible Church now, of Holbrook, is it Holbrook?
Mm-hmm.
Holbrook, yeah, it was always Brookfield, but you people have done an awful lot for the town for years, from Jim U. Banks before him, right straight through, we've had real good rapport, and they've done a lot, you have a food bank up there too, I believe, don't you?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, we do, that's good, well, just continue doing what you, you are doing, whatever else did, a great asset to Holbrook.
Thank you, I'm very encouraged to hear that, I know only a little bit of the history, so, I'm a little very glad to hear that.
Excellent, great, thank you, Pastor. All right, Tim?
That completes my report.
And then we have a Holbrook Cares meeting next week, is that right, with the, with the, the police chief? Chief, hi, chief, oh, is that, is that right, I'm sorry to steal your thunder from, but we, it just came up, obviously, with Pastor.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth at 11:00.
Right here.
Okay, great. So that, that meeting, just so we have kind of a little tease here, so, some great things are happening on the North Shore, particularly in Gloucester, where they're trying to decriminalize drug use, and actually get those individuals the help that they need, and very successful in, in Gloucester, which has a very, very heavy, heavy heroin usage problem, and so chief is trying to see what we can do to recreate kind of the successes that they've had in Gloucester, and be able to replicate them here on the South Shore, and it's obviously bigger than just Holbrook, it's bigger than just a selectman or the police chief, there's a lot of moving parts that need to come together, but certainly Holbrook Cares has an active, an active interest in, in making sure that, you know, we get some solid traction with this, this epidemic, and hopefully we'll have some good news to report at our next meeting, based on, on what happens next, next Wednesday, so, we appreciate that, chief, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to say that tonight on Channel 7, I believe they're gonna have a part on Second Chance on Drug Addiction in the State, and what they're doing with the treatment now with people, instead of incarceration time, so that's on tonight, on the 11 o'clock news, in one of the segments, so.
All right, great, so I'm not sure, you know, either Tim or chief, would it be appropriate to invite, I mean, is this a closed meeting, is this an open meeting, a community meeting?
It's not a closed meeting.
The first one will be a closed meeting?
Well, it will be a closed.
Okay, and then obviously, you know, Pastor Sean being able to, to kind of rally the clergy in, in town, you know, we might get some nice momentum behind, behind the project, you know, if we incorporate the various congregations in town, so more, more to come on, on this, so, okay.
Yeah, and the, the chief, as with everything else, is, is doing an outstanding job coordinating this with, with the city of Gloucester and, and all those other parties, so, and if I could just add one more thing, I, I was, when I was discussing the Gaming Commission meeting, the town of Holbrook was very well represented there in terms of employees, we had the police chief, the fire chief, Director Hook, the treasurer, the, the director of DPW, so there, and there were more, but the town was well represented at that meeting, so.
All right, great, thank you, all right, so anything further on open statuses?
Provide you a copy with the report, I think, I think we covered the, the high points.
Okay, all right, great.
There's more in there, I mean, I highlighted some stuff in yellow regarding certain items, but...
Okay, and so next order of business is the, the grant ambulance abatements for quarter of October 1st through December 31st, so, hi, chief, so this is typical housekeeping for, for us, I know that you and Tim have a little bit of homework to do, you know, on dissecting the numbers and how we...
That's our plan, we didn't, we...
...pay back so much.
We, we, we didn't realize this, this abatement was going to be only a meeting or two since the last quarterly abatement, so, we'll get together, and Luke has done some preliminary work, but we'll, we'll kind of dissect that a little bit, I, for me, I don't, I don't know, I don't expect the numbers are going to change, but it'd just be good to get a better understanding of what's abated and what, what the basis is.
All right, good.
That's correct, just to follow up, Mr. Chairman, on Tom Mestray Gordon's report, the preliminary and meetings and, and phone conversations indicate that it's, this number, like, like was reported, isn't going to change too much, and it's really more a factor of how we account for it than an actual, you know, abatement, so to speak, in the, in the traditional sense of the word, so, we'll hopefully be meeting in short order with our representatives and get back to you with the full report.
Okay, thank you. No, no, that's it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we have an abatement for $175,295.10 for the quarter of October 1st, 2015, to December 31st, 2015.
Second? Second by Mr. McGahey, all those in favor? Okay, and we have vote for the special town meeting, and opening to close the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Selectmen schedule a special town meeting on Wednesday, May 11th, 2016, at 8:15 PM in the gymnasium of the Holbrook Junior Senior High School, 245 South Franklin Street.
Second. Okay, we have a motion at second, all those in favor?
What were the dates?
May 11th, 2016, at 8:15. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that I move the Board of Selectmen open the warrant for the special town meeting at 8:00 AM on Thursday, February 11th, 2016, and close it at noon on Friday, April 1st, 2016.
Second. Okay. We have a motion at second, and all those in favor? Next order of business is to vote to sell the town-owned property at 227 Plymouth Street, so, Tim, do you want to walk us through?
Yeah, so you got a couple of documents there, you have a motion that needs to be voted on by the board, it's, this is a bit of housekeeping, they went through all the minutes over the past few years, and couldn't find a, a real specific vote, I mean, the town meeting voted, there were votes to bring it to town meeting, but they couldn't find a real clean vote on the actual sale, so, in order to just, you know, clean that up, town council is proposing the, the attached motion for vote, also attached to the original that I provided you is a deed document that also needs a signature from each of you, and the, the closing is scheduled for the, the 24th of February.
So, 227 is the, the old schoolhouse, used to be the administrative offices for the superintendent of the school district.
That's correct.
And so they, they had moved several years ago, the property was vacant, and this property is, is being sold to, is it the owners of?
People own Agapean.
The owners of the Agapean, and it'll be used as an administrative building of some sort for them.
I'm not sure, actually, how they're gonna use it.
Supposedly, they're going to use it as, for offices.
Okay.
What they could do with the building that they now have offices in now, I don't know, they could expand their...
Some changes, yeah, okay. All right, good, Kevin?
I'd like to make a motion to sell the property located at 227 Plymouth Street, Sean on Holbrook's assesses map 22 as parcel 212, containing 13,760 square feet of land and building for the amount of $250,000 to Thomas F. Colhane and Barney K. Colhane, as authorized by Article 15 of the February 2nd, 2010 special town meeting, and Article 30 of the May 3rd, 2011 annual town meeting.
Second.
That's a motion, it's second by Mr. Moriarty.
Mr. Pastor, why don't you?
Okay, just one second. Yes, Kevin?
Was this property auctioned, or have you arrived at this party?
It was, it was auctioned.
It was, it was...
As, as Tim mentioned, it, this is, you know, it was passed in town meeting in 2010, and it was auctioned soon thereafter, and I guess there was a couple auctions that didn't go, we didn't get the minimum bid.
Right.
And the last time, we, we did, so there was only, if my memory serves right, there was only one person bid on it on the last occasion, for the obvious reasons, because they're the abutters to the property.
And let you make one comment, or two comments, one, that Paul Gordon helped seeing this through, he's a realtor over here, and he's not getting paid anything for doing it, their first bid was $50,000, so the $250 is a lot better than the $50, and I just think he needs to be thanked, and we have, we've got a decent price for it.
All right, Tim, would you mind just developing a letter of thanks? Just to show our appreciation for the efforts to broker the deal with the Colhane family? Thank you.
To, I'm, I'm sorry, to Paul Gordon.
Express our, you know, because of brokering the Colhane deal.
Yeah, okay, got it.
Yeah.
You want to sign that, or do you want me to just sign?
You can sign it if you wish, it's fine. All right, so we have a motion, it's already seconded by Mr. Moriarty, all those in favor? Great, thank you very much.
So I do have an original going around there, so I'm, I'm wearing, I'm wearing Margie's hat tonight as well, so I'll be cracking the whip on that, and there's two pieces that you have to sign on that.
That's correct. All right, and last week, or our last meeting, we had a, a great presentation from the sixth-grade civics group at the South School, and they had petitioned us to designate a date in September for Peace Day, is it Peace Day, Tim, or is it Peace, One Peace Day?
I'm not sure.
Either or.
Eric?
One Peace Day?
Peace One Day, isn't it?
Peace, Peace, Peace One Day, yeah.
Peace One Day, yeah.
No, it didn't, didn't sound right. Okay, so everyone is, is pretty much up to date on, on this, it's the ability for us to, to promote peace, it would be a, kind of the linchpin of the, the civics club for celebrations, and I'm sure they'll do lessons around, around that region school.
So just to clarify, it's Peace One Day organization, and the September 21st would be named World Peace Day, that's according to our minutes?
Okay, all right, so, if there's no discussion, I would entertain a motion to designate September 21st as World Peace Day here in the town of Holbrook.
So who?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. You second?
Yes.
You, you're the motion?
What's that?
Who? Okay, and so we have a standing issue with, that was addressed last meeting as well, with the Holbrook Dam, the standpipe and the water mains, so I'm not sure if there's any, any movement on that.
Not, I mean, there's been internal movement and discussions about, and basically we need some, a source of revenue to, to pay for some of these projects, so, I have the assessors looking at the overlay to see if there's anything there, keep in mind that standpipe is a shared cost with the town of Randolph, and I think we got to, we got to get through the budget process, free cash has been, you know, all of the documentation has been submitted to the state, we should be hearing on our free cash within the next week or two, I would think, so I think the Dust needs to settle on that, and get through the budget process, or at least well into it, and figure out what our options are in terms of funding these projects.
Okay.
But not to put it off, I mean, we got, a couple of them we got to do, I think, you know, the, the standpipe is probably the most critical of...
And the water mains.
And the water mains, right.
Tim, you said you had a meeting with the Joint Water, what, yesterday?
We did.
Was any of that brought up?
We did, yeah, we brought it up, they, they understand, I mean, they, they'll respond accordingly, I mean, he just said if it has to be done, it has to be done, and...
Good.
And they recognize that, that they're responsible for 50%.
What was the cost, the proposed cost?
I think it was $420, $450? It'll be $225 for the town of Holbrook.
It's important that we do that.
I know.
Quickly.
Good, Chief McFadden, do you have anything for, for us from an update standpoint?
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, just briefly...
Just briefly, operationally, I think every, many of you know, we were extremely busy last Friday during the snowstorm. The department responded to fifty calls in the forty-eight hour period that began at eight A.M. on Friday. Not, to the best of my knowledge, there were no serious storm injuries, storm related injuries here in Holbrook, but there was quite a bit of damage from down trees and falling limbs and power outage, power outages. The emergency director, management director, Richard Ruse, opened a warming shelter, though I believe power was restored in short order, so that there was no long-term needs for the shelter. And I believe you'll also probably hear a report from this on Chief Smith last week. The fire and police departments received initial joint training from the regional Safety Net representative on how to conduct searches usually using the specialized radio tracking equipment that's been provided by Safety Net to the fire and police departments. For those of you familiar with LoJack, this is essentially the same technology, it's just being applied to personal safety as opposed to cars. So families with loved ones that are prone to wandering, those with Alzheimer's or autism, for example, and are enrolled in the Safety Net program can usually be located extremely quickly utilizing these tools. So that, that training is, is really a critical, an important tool for the Holbrook Public Safety Departments.
Do you know what, how many citizens actually engage with that technology?
So there are, there are three, there are three, there are three persons to our knowledge right now that are in Holbrook on a regular basis. A few are residents, some are in the town for various reasons other than that. So there's a pretty wide database, or a pretty extensive database that's maintained by Safety Net that will give the police and fire department administrators information as to who's in the community in the program. So there's three at a minimum right now. We expect, you know, realistically, that number will probably grow in the future, not contract. And obviously, you know, we're not promoting this particular tracking system over other systems or technologies that are out there. We just happen to have this technology available, available to us through the Safety Net program. So we just wanted to report to you and the residents that, that's out there. Mrs. Chan?
Is there a basic criteria to be in that?
I'm sure there is, and I'll try to get you some more information on that going forward. And I know that, I know the Norfolk County Sheriff's Office as well is familiar with and has some of this tracking equipment as well. So I will try to give you some additional information on that for the next meeting.
Are you talking about from the, the fire department and police standpoint?
Yes.
Or from the residents' standpoint?
Either, either or.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, from my understanding, it's a tracking, it could be a bracelet, bracelet or a medallion, right, that has the, the technology in it?
But sometimes.
The person's always wearing it, so when they.
Sometimes it has to be like a criteria to be eligible for that.
Okay.
I, I don't know the answer to that right, right at the moment. I'll try to get some more information for you.
I'm sure. Alzheimer's patients, persons with dementia, things of that nature. All right, good. Anything else, Chief?
No, that's it, thank you.
Anything else for Chief? Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Chief Smith?
Still on my phone, man. There, there is a fee with that. Initial fee to set up, and it's a monthly fee. Right now, there's a bill before the legislature to have, to have the insurance companies take that fee, to touch the insurance company, so they're working on that now. I only get one thing. As you know, we have two open slots in the police department we're trying to fill. I have a lateral transfer that wants to come over. I want to put it before the board next, next meeting. I have the information, I've contacted Civil Service, got the necessary paperwork. He comes from Avon, he's been in Avon since two thousand and eight. I've known him for a long time, he's a real good kid. He'd be a great asset. I have the paperwork for Tim. It's gonna save the town a lot of money.
And so how does that, so how does that work with a lateral transfer?
The lateral transfer, the board has to approve it, and then the paper goes to Civil Service, and they confirm it, then it's accepted.
Does Avon have to release?
Avon is already the selectman, I've already decided to release him.
Okay. All right, great.
They gave him their blessing.
And then, and then the second person, that spot would be filled by selected service?
Yep, on this list. We're still doing background checks.
When would we know?
We should have the background checks done by a couple weeks, and then we'll bring them before you.
Okay, and when's the next class that you're aware of?
Unfortunately, the next class is, the next class is actually gonna be April, but we won't be ready for that April class, so probably looking at June or July. They had a class in February, they had to cancel because there wasn't enough people in it, so they postponed it to April, but we're not gonna be able to make that date.
I thought you were appointing three?
The third will be after the budget's approved for the school resource officer, but the two right now are confirmed. So there will be a third one if the budget gets approved.
If that's in their budget.
How many have applied?
Civil Service sent out a list of, we have six applicants. All the Holbrook residents.
So those individuals either sign, they, they intend to take the position if they take the initiative. So we're at that point now where we're, we know who's intending to take it, if, if given it, background checks, and then from there we'll make selections.
With the lateral transfer, there's no academy training, he just steps right in.
I hear that we had veterans, were there mostly veterans that had applied?
There's no veterans currently right now.
None of these?
No, they didn't sign up, no. The list, the, the very top of the list is survivors of someone killed in the line of duty, and a lot of them are waiting for Boston or state police. So I mean, they came down to the first, first page, and that's most of them. No one signed up on that one. They went to the second one, they got like two. They went to the third one, they got the rest of them. But they're all Holbrook residents. No veterans.
Great. Anything else for Chief Smith?
Thank you.
All right. Mr. DeCort?
Good evening. We had a couple of snowstorms, as you all know. Friday's was very dangerous, snowfall, being where all the branches and the wires were down, we had road closed. We had to assist the P.D. with closing certain areas, streets off, Wayman Street, a few streets in the Grove. But we got through it. We had a crew out Saturday with the chipper, and we basically cleaned the whole town up, all the limbs that came down, most of anyways. I think we, what we should do is, come springtime, when the snow is gone, any of the residents that have any limbs that came down and they can't get rid of them, we just have to tell them to bring them to the edge of the road, we'll send the truck around, and we'll help them out and chip them up for them. And we've had a couple of water main breaks. We repaired a leak just today right over here on Jewel Road. It was an inch and a half old galve line, about seventy years old, but. Anyways, with all the snow that's been falling, we are now into deficit spending. I know you don't want to hear that, but I gotta, I need to bring it to your attention, so. I, I know it's not on the agenda, but.
We'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
I believe people have to vote for us to continue to be spending. I know not all of you's got. Just, just the breakdown of the stats on fire.
Okay, so, Tim will discuss this the next, the next meeting.
Yeah.
And actually, what, what put us over was, it was something that we needed. We had that twenty-nine thousand that we bought the truck with out of snow and ice. We had permission, so that is what put us over.
Okay.
Okay?
And, and also, there was something else charged there, right? There was snow removal equipment?
We could discuss it next, next meeting, it's fine.
I get the breakdown.
All right.
Okay, great. Anything else for Ben? Great. Last but not least.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Just want to report tonight that on Thursday, we started dispatching Whitman Fire full time. Of course, on Friday, we had the snowstorm. We were very busy during that period. Between the four towns, eight-hour period, we had over a hundred and sixty calls. What I mean by calls, that's not the number of times a phone rang, it's a lot higher than that. These are calls where we dispatch a piece of apparatus or a police cruiser to. So it was very busy for that eight-hour period. There were no issues, went smooth, continues to go well. I just want to recognize the dispatchers for working together to get this done. It's a teamwork, it's just not me, it's everybody's gonna work as a team to get this done, but so far, so good.
So when you have an impending storm, do we add more staff?
We do.
To the phones?
Yep.
Is it typically, is there a ratio, or is that just a?
No, it depends on what the storm's gonna bring and what the forecast is.
Okay, and so that's something you make a call a day or two prior to?
We try to, yeah. This storm, Friday's storm was, was, I think, we're all a little taken back because we didn't expect the, the wire damage and the tree damage that we received. But we did up, upstaffed by one dispatcher on Friday, and then we upstaffed by one dispatcher on Monday, Monday storm as well.
Okay. Anything further?
Thank you.
And Paul, the treasurer's report?
You know, not much. The real estate tax bills are starting to come in. Excise tax bills just went out, we're receiving a few payments on those. Other than that, as Tim mentioned, we've just been going over the budget. And I don't, and we'll probably will have, I'll have an update for you on the tax titles. I was talking to the, the Ambrosen Brown, and we scheduled the end of the month of February to, to have a recap, see where they stand.
Okay, and that's the company that's doing some of the.
Ambrosen Brown is doing all of our collections.
The collections?
Outstanding tax title collections.
Okay. Would they be at, at this meeting?
No, they will come to a meeting, but I think we need to let them get, they're just sending the letters out. I think probably, you know, late April, early May, they will, they will be coming to a meeting before town meeting to discuss the, the, not the foreclosure, but the receivership program. And because we're gonna be looking for, to fund some of that. It's one of those things you gotta pay some money upfront to, to see the benefit of it. So they're gonna come to a, a, a Board of Selectmen meeting to discuss that, and they'll give an update on the tax title. And they're going to, we're gonna be bringing an article to town meeting to allow us to lean to the tax bill, any citations written by the building department. Currently, you can't do that, and it's, we have to adopt Chapter Forty-U, I think it is.
Yep. Okay, excellent.
We'll get, we'll get a tracker going, it's just, it's kind of early right now to do that.
Yeah, I mean, with, whether it's, it's, you know, dollars amount, percentages, you know, it's just, it's just good to see that, you know, there's some momentum.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be, it'll be dollar and percent, we'll, we'll come up with something.
Yeah, no, that'd be great. Anything else for Paul? Okay, great. Tim, I just wrote a note down, if we could just write a letter to Ms. Plauer, just to tell her that the board approved the World Peace Day for nine twenty-one, I'm sure.
I actually think you voted at last meeting, but I, I'll, I'll check the minutes.
Do we?
Yeah. But we'll, we'll do, I'll let, I, we've been playing phone tags.
Just let her know so that there's something, there's something to celebrate. Okay. Any citizens' comments based on discussion this evening? No?
I just have a couple of reattacks, if I could. Just, just a heads up, so collective bargaining negotiations right now, we're, we're in discussions with Joint Water, as I mentioned, the dispatchers, and also clerical and DPW, we're just getting, getting started in, within the next month. So just an FYI, you're gonna start seeing some executive sessions on, on the agenda coming, moving forward in the next couple months. And the Memorial Day, we have a Memorial Day meeting on Tuesday, so we're starting to ramp up for Memorial Day, and pulling the Road Race Committee together, and, you know, that's a, that's a, as you know, a big town event, and we, we like to do it, do it right, so start early.
Excellent. Great. So no other business before us, I move that we adjourn the Selectmen's meeting from February tenth, two thousand and sixteen. So all those in favor? Great, thank you very much.